On the in presence, I call the meeting to an end. All rise for the blood of the people. For my blood, religion, we look back on the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands my nation under God and is available with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the October 17, 2022, Acushnet Special Wall Town Meeting. My name is Wes Baker and I'm your Town Administrator. I've been informed that the warrant has been promptly executed for your current service and appointments without violation. I'd like to begin by introducing the head table, beginning with this gentleman. Please.
Jonathan Murray, Town Council.
Pamela Labonte, Town Clerk.
Microphones not working close. How is it now? Can everyone hear me now? I need to stand a little closer. Sorry.
Jonathan Murray, Town Council.
Pamela Labonte, Town Clerk.
Eric Chu, Finance Committee Representative, Mike Boucher, who is in absence today.
Todd Hassett, Town Accountant.
Jamie Kelly, Town Administrator.
Kevin Gasp, Board of Selectmen.
David Warner, Board of Selectmen.
Todd, Board of Selectmen.
At this time, we'd like to recognize and honor a man for his dedication and commitment to the town of Acushnet for the past fifty years. He was a valuable contributing member of the Acushnet School Committee. He's a man you saw organizing and controlling traffic during peak storm periods and recovery efforts, as well as events such as the Apple and Peach Festival, the Little League parades, classic car shows, et cetera, et cetera. A man you saw, if you needed to find a department's angels of mercy, as I call them. A man you saw as an emergency medical technician who rendered vital medical assistance to the sick, the elderly, and injured and stressful kinds of people, also administering COVID vaccines at the council on age. Jerry Bergeron, I'm proud and honored to present you with this Service Recognition Award for your service to the town of Acushnet for the past fifty years. Please stand. I hope you all can hear me. This is the town of Acushnet, which is recognized and honored for dedication and commitment to the Lord, A. Bergeron, for fifty years of service with the Acushnet Fire Department, Emergency Medical Services, Emergency Management Agency, the Acushnet School Committee, and the town of Acushnet. Thank you again, sir. Open town meetings like this, folks, are the epitome of freedom of speech and democracy. Each and every one of you tonight will have the opportunity to question, comment, amend, modify, and ultimately approve or reject each article in this warrant. This is your meeting and your tax dollars. Your participation is not only encouraged, it's your absolute right. A few housekeeping items. Please note that the Senate floor reserves for registered voters in town and the Acushnet Department heads own. Everyone seated in the center kindly raise your blue card when you enter. Everyone have a blue card? Thank you. Non-registered voters, visitors, observers are to be seated to the rear of the Senate floor and, in this case, on this side. Each registered voter was presented with his card upon verification of voting status, and those cards will be the only means of voting tonight when raised to be counted. Kindly silence all cell phones so as not to disturb the meetings. And please note the emergency exit nearest to you in the event we have to evacuate the building. The restrooms are in the hallway to my right. I'll now be reading briefly what I call a process summary. I won't be reading every article verbatim, but I'll provide a summary of each. The full text is on the handouts provided to you when entered. If you would like to speak on an article, line up at the microphone in the Senate floor. Non-residents will not be allowed to speak unless they are department heads or town employees or the majority of the registered voters have agreed to let them speak. When recognized by the moderator, clearly state your name and town address before speaking. You have the absolute right to understand what you are voting on. Articles are written to comply with the law, and the full intent of the article may not be clear to you as well as to others. Our town administrator, Mr. Kelly, has gone to great lengths at presenting explanations at the end of each article, which I will read. It's intended to be in more vague terms and more easily understandable. Everyone here is entitled to question any aspect of an article, and we will address every question asked. Procedurely, all questions shall be directed through the moderator to maintain the thorough and make efficient use of our time. Speak only to the motion at the moment. Rude or disrespectful speech will not be tolerated. Direct conversations between participants will only be allowed if it serves to answer important questions and is deemed to be beneficial to the meeting's efficiency. Please remember there is a distinct difference between questions and answers and debates. All may speak on a motion as many times as they like, but no one may speak twice until all who wish to speak have spoken once. I do reserve the right to limit discussion once we reach the onerous point of repetition. And without objection, I reserve the right to recess at any point. Lastly, all votes are final. Votes are taken, and we move on. As evidenced by past practice, we do not reconsider votes here. Reconsideration will be appropriate only if there were errors or omissions of material facts, or if we learn of some critical information that was not previously available when the vote was taken. Now to the articles. Article one, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of $4,077.62 to pay for the following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year or take any other action in relation thereto. Unpaid bill number one, police department to the city of Bedford, $140 range fees fiscal year 2020. Unpaid bill two, police department to the city of the veteran, $120 range fees fiscal year 2021. Unpaid bill number three, police department, Ready Fresh, $60.45 for water delivery. Unpaid bill number four, police department, the W.D. Mason, $79.42 for office supplies. Unpaid bill five, county department, the vendor is Milliman, $3,500 for actuarial services fiscal year 2021. Unpaid bill number six, treasurer's department, Harper's Payroll Service, $177.75 for fiscal year 2022 payroll processing, for a total of $4,077.62. This article is traditionally presented to settle prior year's bills that were received and/or processed after the end of the fiscal year. The finance department, in reviewing past accounts, revealed these omitted debts. Now this will take a nine percent affirmative vote to pay these odd bills from last year. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate from taxation the sum of $4,077.62 to pay for the following unpaid bills from the prior fiscal years. Police FY 20, the city of Bedford, $140 range fees. Police FY 21, city of Bedford, $120 range fees. Police Ready Fresh, $60.45 water delivery. Police W.B. Mason, $79.42 office supplies. Finance FY 21, Milliman, $3,500 actuarial services. Treasury FY 2022, Harper's Payroll, $177.75 FY 22 payroll, for a total of $4,077.62.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this article.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article one passes unanimously. Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriated sum of $44,472.57 to transfer from school roof premium, the sum of $15,643.43, for a total of $60,116, to amend the appropriations stated below that were previously voted in Article 17 of the May 9, 2022 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, for various town departments, and to reduce estimated water revenue, the sum of $70,000, and estimated sewer revenue, the sum of $90,000, or take any other action in relation thereto. This article will correct revenue, expense, and assessment budgets, as well as correspond and reconcile those budgets to the general fund balances. In examining past by the interrecords, the town administrator, the finance department, and the treasurer collector's office encountered county errors and omissions, and after discussion with and advice from the mass department of revenue, the town needs to rectify. Additionally, the fiscal year 2023 budget contains items that require adjustments. The town administrator's contract was negotiated after town meeting with a revised salary progression. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate from taxation the sum of $44,472.57 to transfer from school roof premium, the sum of $15,643.43, for a total of $60,116, and to amend the appropriations stated below that were previously voted in Article 17 of May 9, 2022 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, for various town departments. Line number 1122, select ward salaries, $2,500 TA's contract. Line number 1135, finance salaries, $5,000 recruit adjustment. Line item 1145, treasurer collector's salaries, $5,000 recruit adjustment. Line item 2250, fire department expenses, $40,000 turnout here. Line item 3325, school department expenses, negative 136,788, $136,788 budget adjustment. Line item 3325, school department expenses, $75,000 collaboration tuition. Line item 3325, school department expenses, $74,404 ST interest. Line item 4422, public works expenses, $25,000 fuel. Line item 5543, veterans expenses, negative $30,000 reduced cases. The total amount, $60,116, and to reduce estimated water revenue, the sum of $70,000, and estimated sewer revenue, the sum of $90,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this article.
I will now read each line item. If you wish to comment on a line item, raise your hand and stay hold. We will return to all line items held when all has been read. You need not identify yourself for all the line items, but prepare to comment on it when we return to that item. Line 1122, select ward salaries, $2,500 contractual obligation. Finance department salaries, $5,000 recruitment adjustment. Line 1145, treasurer collector's salaries, $5,000 recruitment adjustment. Fire department. Line 2220, expense, $40,010, 10 cents turnout here. Line 3325, Acushnet Public Schools' expense, negative $136,788, school choice, is now to be paid from state assessments. This is a budget adjustment. Line 3325, Acushnet Public Schools', expenses, $75,000 for collaborative tuition. Line 3325, Acushnet Public Schools' debt service, $74,404, school roof project, shock term interest. Line item 4422, public works fuel expense, $25,000 gasoline, diesel fuel. Line 5543, veterans expense, negative $30,000 reduced cases. Subtotal, $60,116. Line item 4440, sewer expense, reduction of $90,000. Line item 4450, water expense, reduction of $7,000 reduced consumption. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put Article two to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article two passes unanimously. Article three, to see if the town will vote to rescind the borrowing authority for the following purposes. Sewer loan program. Article 10 of the April 24, 2006 annual town meeting, $7,422.49. The new police station. Article three of the October 22, 2012 special town meeting, $238,814. This article is presented on advice of the town's bond council to rescind the authorization to borrow from projects already completed. The borrowing limits involved have not been used, and the extra funds are not needed. This action will include the amounts involved in the town's total borrowing limit. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to rescind the borrowing authority for the sewer loan program as authorized in Article 10, April 24, 2006 annual town meeting, the amount of $7,422.49, and for the new police station as authorized in Article 40 of the October 22, 2012 special town meeting, the amount of $238,814.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this article.
Uh, unanimously. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article three, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article three passes unanimously. Article four, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the sewer benefit fund, the sum of $303,687, to amend the previous appropriations voted in Article 19 of the May 9, 2022 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, to the sewer enterprise debt service or take any other action thereto. This article will clarify funding source voted in Article 19 of the May 9, 2022 for repayment of the sewer enterprise debt service. The wording of this article is recommended by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I recommend the town vote to transfer from the sewer benefit fund the sum of $303,687 to amend the previous appropriations voted in Article 19 of the May 9, 2022 annual town meeting for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, to the sewer enterprise debt service.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this article.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article four, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article four passes unanimously. Article five, see if the town will vote to transfer from the sewer enterprise fund the sum of $60,500 to complete Phase Four of the sewer infiltration and inflow investigation program or take any other action thereto. This article will continue to fund the town's program for leak detection in the sewer system, as well as ensuring no gross contamination to the stormwater system. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the sewer enterprise fund the sum of $60,500 to complete Phase Four of sewer infiltration and flow investigation program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this article.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article five, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article five passes unanimously. Article six, see if the town will vote to transfer from the golf course retained earnings, $300,000 for the, excuse me, for the purpose of various capital repair and replacement projects, including but not limited to irrigation system repairs and replacements, car path repairs, replacement of equipment, and expenditures approved by the golf management committee and board of selectmen, or take any other action thereon or in relation thereto. This article is presented by the golf management committee to continue the capital repair projects for the upkeep of the course, including car path repair, course design and turf repair, as well as repairs to the irrigation system. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from the golf course retained earnings, the sum of $300,000, for the purpose of various capital repair and replacement projects, including but not limited to irrigation system repairs and replacements, car path repairs, replacement of equipment, expenditures approved by the golf management committee and the board of selectmen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this article.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article six, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article six passes with opposition. Article seven, see if the town will vote to transfer from the unused balances of the capital projects identified below, the sum of $80,000 for the capital projects stated below, and anything incidental or related thereto, including but not limited to the purpose of installation of equipment and supplies, or take any other action in relation thereto. This article is presented to provide funding from unused balances in the past, no longer necessary. Articles for the supplemental cost for internal to the building's equipment for the town buildings fiber optics project. The state fiber optics grant of $250,000 pays for the external stringing of fiber optic cables and associated wiring. This project will create fiber optic connectivity between the town's buildings, including schools. Any remaining funds will be used toward fire panel security system and camera upgrades for town hall and party ways, and the townwide phone system replacement. All of these upgrades will be enhancements made possible by this project. Now, the unused funds, Selective Department, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, Special Town Meeting, November 2016, $52,875.23. Line two, the assessors, industrial appraisal, annual town meeting, May 2021, $4,948. Conservation Department, the GIS plotter, annual town meeting, May 2019, $2,000. Animal Control and Vehicle, annual town meeting, November 2020, $10,878.77. Planning Board, zoning bylaw, Special Town Meeting, October 2004, $4,315.76. Police Department, radio replacement, annual town meeting, May 2021, $4,400. Town clerk, CD Ron, Special Town Meeting, October 2003, $582.24, for a total of $80,000. Transfer these unused funds to the following fiscal year 2023 capital project. Line one, technology, capital improvements, $80,000. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the unused balances of the capital projects identified as, Special Town Meeting, 1116, Article number four, CWMP plan, $52,875.23. Annual Town Meeting, 521, Article number 12, industrial appraisal, $4,948. Annual Town Meeting, 519, Article 12, GIS plotter, $2,000. Annual Town Meeting, 1120, Article number eight, ACO vehicle, $10,878.77. Special Town Meeting, 1004, Article number 16, zoning bylaw, $4,315.76. Annual Town Meeting, 521, Article number 10, police radios, $4,400. Special Town Meeting, 1003, Article number four, town clerk, CD Ron, $582.24, for a total of $80,000. The sum of $80,000 for the FY 23 In the sum of $80,000 for the FY23 fiber optic cabling and associated capital projects included but not limited to the purpose of installation of equipment and supplies.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this on.
Discussion.
Mr. Moderator. It's actually not much of a discussion. Gary Rockliff, 74 Metro Life. It all totals up to 80 grand, even. No change, no nothing. So was that the actual balance of every one of them articles that was left? And it's just coincidental it adds up 80 grand? Or is there still a little bit of mine left on the table? Mr. Moderator, through you.
Who would like to address that question, please? It's a valid question.
Mr. Moderator, the town accountant is looking for the exact figure, but there is a couple articles that there is, I believe.
There's a little bit left?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Can I give Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Christian Nususa, 46, Lower Keenham. I'm just curious, $250,000 in state funding, is that gonna help to benefit the general public in any way with fiber optics? So we can create a little bit of competition in this town? Maybe not be under such a stronghold with the current provider?
No, it's not going to help other than it will connect all of the town buildings. They cannot communicate directly right now. This will connect them. All of the schools in town will then have a phone service that can be interconnected. The state only, the grant is only for that purpose.
Has anyone taken that into consideration at all on any of the boards that perhaps could be expanded on?
So this particular fiber optic situation that we're doing now, this project that we're doing now is exactly what the town administration said. And it's mostly to connect all our municipal buildings to each other and then provide surveillance from the schools to the police department that we don't currently have. So we're interconnected and we can be monitoring police, the school department with the police department, fire department, all municipal buildings. It'd be pretty much virtually impossible for us to start tying fiber optic into every neighborhood. It would cost fortunate to do that. As you can see, this amount right here is basically 250 plus the 80 is $330,000. And we're just tying municipal buildings together for security reasons to be on our own private network.
I just would hope someone would take that into consideration at some point.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 7, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article 7 passes unanimously. Article 8, see if the town will vote to act on the fiscal year 2023 Community Preservation Budget and to appropriate or reserve from fiscal year 2023 Community Preservation Fund, estimated annual revenues and reserves in the amount recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2023 as follows. Now, when we went to press to publish the warrant for the timely manner, you will notice there were two budgets from this article. There existed a disparity in unrestricted reserves, which has since been satisfactorily rectified by a recent CTC meeting. So we will only discuss what is labeled as the amended budget as recommended by the Board of Select. From fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $12,000. Reserves from fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for historic resources reserved, $26,900. From fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for community housing reserved, $25,000. From fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for open space reserved, $30,000. And from fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for unrestricted reserves, $154,570 for a total of $248,470. Now, the explanation for this is quite lengthy. Excuse me, so I will paraphrase. This ensures compliance with the Community Preservation Act. The funds will be allocated to open space, affordable housing, and historical preservation. Administrative funds will be used to update the community preservation plan, the open space recreation housing master plan, which are currently outdated. Financial review discussed an overrun of $4,570 on the soccer field irrigation plan, which this will address. Open space funds proposed for recreation in the open park, school basketball tennis courts, and bleachers suspected. Historic preservation funds will be used for the long plane museum window project and patio roof repairs. A regional land purchase by Buzzard Bay Coalition preserves 77 acres. You'll think upon that brook was drawn recommended by Selectman and Finance Committee, and this was the recent reconciliation with the Community Preservation Committee. Accordingly, we'll be voting on amended budget voted by the Select. Now, the current balances that we have, reserve for open spaces, $58,083. The reserve for historic preservation is $66,918. Reserve for community housing, $65,513. And the undecimated one balance, $569,670 for a total of $760,184. And just to explain, CTC funds are generated in this town for 1.5% on your tax, not on your total assessment. So if you have a quarterly tax pay of $2,000, the CTC portion of that with an amount of $30 a quarter are $120 a year. Those funds are matched in varying degrees, year by year, by the state. So it's a pretty good deal. There were times when the state matched us dollar for dollar. I'm not certain what it is in this current, in this current day and age. But if you give me a dollar and I give you two back, that's a pretty good deal. Is there a motion for approval, Article 8?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Commission appropriate and transfer as follows. From fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for committee administrative expenses, $12,000. From fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues of historical resource reserves, $26,900. From fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $25,000. From fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for open space reserve, $30,000. From fiscal year 2023, estimated revenues for unrestricted reserves, $154,570 in the sum of $248,470 total.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this article as amended.
Discussion.
Mr. Moderator. Just a question, actually. Gary Rockliff, 74 Metro Life. It's like the first thing, committee administrative expenses. And I don't know if we had that before, and if somebody can, can you?
Well, I'll give you my take on it, and I'll let the Southern Commander Rexwood add on or correct me. We have, as I mentioned in the explanation, we have what the administrative fund is gonna be used for. We need to update the community preservation plan. We've got the open space, recreation, housing, and the master plan. It has not been updated to that reason since 2008. This will correct those issues. And please add on anyone if you would like to.
This is going to be used in association with the 40 hours of work we get from CERP to update all those plans. You do not have a CTC plan at this point. Your housing plan's about to expire. Your master plan is out of date. So this will be used for surveys that are part of compiling those plans for also some of the administrative work that is being done through CERP and through the staff. It is not for a new job.
Okay, okay, Mr. Moderator, can I ask on a question?
Certainly.
So this isn't putting all the eggs in one basket, and sooner or later, one person's gonna get the master plan, the CTC plan, the open space plan, this other plan, and be like, because we have a plan. Is this guy gonna end up planning all these plans?
Some.
It's a question, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator.
Please.
It will be not just the planner, but various members of the staff as well as CERP. And this will be to use to update the master plan. The CPC plan can fold into the master plan. The open space plan can fold into the master plan, et cetera. And we are also going to be using $50,000 of money that the Commonwealth gave us to assist us in this. It is not for any sale at this time.
And one more question if I may, I don't know if somebody's.
No, one more.
Can you tell me what the reimbursement rate was through the state for last year or this year for the CTC funds? What was the match? Was it 10%? I don't know. Could you please tell me?
Oh, it's 44%.
44%? Thank you very much. May I have a turn, Mr.?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, yes. To Mr. Rockliff's question on the $12,000 administrative cost, I, as a member of the Board of Select, made a motion on the floor when we were approving this that before this money can be expended, it takes a vote required by the Board of Select. Sorry, but before we expend this money to anyone. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Moderator, pardon me, I'm here from Peachwood Drive. My question I have is on the coalition for the $77,000, oh, $77,000, because they were spending $85,000 on. It was not recommended by the Select Board. Are we still paying that $85,000?
It was amended. It was amended by CTC prior to this town meeting in the library to go with the Board of Select's recommendation. So after they recommended the takeaway, the way we went, the way I read the motion, I've taken out that $85,000. So the coalition of votes is based on included in this purchase.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 8, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article 8 passes unanimously.
What, Captain?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't see. Article 8 passes with opposition. Article 9, see if the town will vote to approve and fund a three-year collective bargaining agreement from July 1, 2021, to June 30, 2024, between the Massachusetts Laborers Public Employees Council and the town by raising and appropriating $10,969 or take any other action thereto, thereon. The new collective bargaining agreement includes a salary adjustment of 0% in the first year, which is now a retro year, 2% in the second year, effective November 1, 2022, which equates to a 1.34% annual, and 2% in the third year with a signing bonus paid by ALPA funds. That's the American Rescue Plan Act. It also includes a realignment of the salary grid reflecting patability and poverty with other town salary plans. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to approve and fund the three-year collective bargaining agreement, July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2024, between the Massachusetts Laborers Public Employees Council and the town by raising and appropriating $10,969, $1,000 from taxation.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this on.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator. Just one question to the board with Mr. Kelly or the president or the commissioner.
Please, please.
How much, Dave, the Roush, 1399 Main Street, question? How much APF fund was paid to the employees to fulfill this contract?
$2,000 per employee.
And how many employees? What was the total? Did they have a total?
Nine.
Nine? Okay, so 18,000.
Actually, 18,000.
18,000. Very good, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 9, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article 9 passes with opposition. Article 10, see if the town will vote to approve and fund a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 851, July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2025, in the town, or take any other action thereon. The new collective bargaining agreement includes a salary adjustment of 0% in the first year, 2% in the second year, and 2% in the third year with a signing bonus paid by American Rescue Plan Act funds. There is no additional funding necessary, the fund is at range. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I approve the town vote to approve and fund the three-year collective bargaining agreement of July 1, 2022, to June 30, 2025, between the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Council 93, Local 851, and the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee recommends this on.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 10, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article 10 passes with opposition. Article 11. I'll read the article.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I request the town meeting pass over this article because negotiations have not yet been completed.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. And I was going to say, with a lack of the current collective bargaining agreement, I would look to take a motion to take no action on Article 11. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
There'll be no finance committee recommendation. Is there any discussion when we got to this article? Hearing none, but I'll take a vote to take no action on this article. All those in favor of taking no action, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Thank you. There should be no action on Article eleven. Article twelve, large-scale round-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. Save the town a vote to amend Article eight of the zoning bylaws concerning large-scale round-mounted solar photovoltaic photovoltaic installations, that's a bylaw, by replacing the existing article and inserting the following act in relation thereto. Is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend Article eight of the zoning bylaws concerning large-scale round-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, by replacing the existing bylaw and inserting the amended bylaw as printed in the law.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance committee recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, finance committee recommends this on a vote.
I'd like to open up the discussion here with the chairman of the planning board. Let's follow them.
Mr. Moderator, people knowing twenty-nine Main Road Farm Drive, Kuschnik. I just want to make sure that my understanding on this is correct, that if we do not vote to amend the article as it stands, the current article will expire, and that will create an issue in the town where future solar farms will have no restrictions on them whatsoever. Is that correct?
I would ask.
Mr. Moderator. Yes, correct. So it will revert back to the previous bylaw, which basically gave the planning board the special ability to write a special permit for ground mounted.
So we have no protection as a town or as individual landowners? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Francois. I'm the chairman of the planning board, three oh one Main Road. Let me give you a little background on this article. At the twenty-twenty-two spring town meeting, the town of Kuschnik passed a temporary hundred-and-eight-day solar moratorium on the siting of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. During this time, town undertook the planning process to study, review, analyze, and address necessary revisions to the zoning bylaws. The purpose of this new bylaw is to provide clear and comprehensive regulations for the placement, design, construction, operation, monitoring, and removal of such installations to promote and address public safety and minimize the impact on scenic, natural, and historic resources, and to promote public health and welfare. This is done by minimizing impact on undue disturbances to neighboring landowners. Some key takeaways to the new bylaw is we ensure that the installation will require a minimum of three acres of land. No structure shall be erected within three hundred feet of a way road, as described in the Mass General Law. The side and rear setbacks are a hundred and fifty feet to the nearest abiding property line. One of the biggest changes is the proponent of the installation shall provide a form of surety, either in cash or bond, to cover the cost of the removal in the event the town must remove the installation. A yes vote will ensure that the town is protected on the promoting of all solar installations, two hundred kilowatts or greater moving forward. Provides comprehensive standards for the planning board, engineers, landowners, inhabitants for solar installations, two hundred kilowatts or greater. A no vote on this article. We would stay with the current, oh, the current solar moratorium expires, and the town continues to follow the current set of regulations that have proven inadequate in effectively protecting public safety, neighborhoods, and are all characteristic of public safety.
Mr. Francois, the planning board did approve and recommend its article.
The planning board did approve unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Francois. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
Devin Varela, six one six Main Street, Kuschnik. Going through this lengthy article, I'm just trying to notice if there is any wording as to clearcutting for street, which has been a problem. And also the setbacks of what the setbacks are for people that are not on a roadway, but that are laning a black sea shepherd instead of a roadway. And would this just be the project's going forward, or anything that is?
I'm the moderator, the town planner. So the setbacks could be a hundred and fifty feet from a abiding property owner is not in the ten consideration of a roadway that's acceptable to match their law. There are provisions in place in the bylaw that do address clearing of trees. So I've looked at a few different things on this. One of the things I could look at was, okay, we're not necessarily able to put monetary value on the clearing of trees at this time, but we can have those trees placed in another's location. And Kuschnik will place it in the buffer zones that is a hundred and fifty feet or three hundred feet in front of the solar field. And in terms of the solar systems that are already built and permitted, so they do have a two-year permit lifespan on them until they do pull building permit. The ones that are already permitted are grandfathered in under the current bylaw. However, if they come in for modification or anything, they're there to move forward. The current, the new regulations would affect that.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator. I actually have two questions, but I'll do them one at a time if somebody else wants to talk. And the woman who performed it was correct, because it's very lengthy. Gary Rockford, seventy-four Main Drive. So it's going to sound off the wall. And I know sometimes you guys think it's funny, but. Right in the beginning, it talks about the side setbacks and the street, and unless the topography of the road allows for the solar panel not to be seen. So I was like, where the heck might this be in town? But the only thing I could think of was coming down South Main Street, had like PJ Keating. When you try to look up at PJ Keating, this is a portion where there's a ton of rock ledge, and you can't see up above it. So I was wondering if maybe on top of that ledge, if that would be a suitable consideration for a place for solar panels to go, because you wouldn't be able to see them from the street. I would assume you would have to refer me to the planning answer that, but that's the question.
Well, I don't see that as, you know, that's beyond the scope of this article. That's the, you know, your projections of a future site. So I won't take that as a question.
Well, it does have a direct effect as to whether that can be a site. Okay, so, all right, so I'll concede that to you, Mr. Moderator, and we'll move on to the next one. So the setbacks were a hundred and fifty feet, and you have to stay three hundred feet back from the road. So follow me, no solar panels going to be zero feet wide. So you're going to have a hundred and fifty feet buffer over here, a hundred and fifty feet buffer over there. Let's make it easy. The solar panel is going to be a hundred and fifty feet. So now there's three hundred feet, three hundred feet from the road to the solar panels, okay? And now it's three hundred feet long. That's three house locks in the town of Kuschnik. Can somebody come back after the construction of the solar fields and go to the Board of Appeals and appeal to get their house lock and convert it into a house lock? That's a valid question.
I would, I would refer that to the planning board.
Dave Vickin, thirty-three, Enzo White Drive, I'm a planning board member. If I understand the question correctly, Gary, I think what you're asking for, if we were to approve a site plan that required a solar farm to be three hundred feet back from the road, it's going to preclude that from coming back and trying to get three house locks within the three hundred feet, thereby eliminating the whole point of the three hundred foot setback.
Do you think the Board of Appeals would be within their rights to do that?
Not a full-blown, an absolute, no builds on within the three hundred feet while the solar panels exist, which I believe we have a right to do.
My question is, when we answer, man, turn to the left.
Thank you, Mr. Francois.
The whole part of the bylaw, if you look at, take your time, look at the bylaws that exist today. It's age or two, there's not much there. I've only been on the planning board eighteen months. One of the reasons I got off the planning board was I followed the planning board matters. And we have something like twenty solar arrays moved in town. Now, not, a lot of them are not built, and there are reasons for that. They don't have the O K forever, so essentially to tighten the grid, but eventually they're all working on that. Once those permits expire, there's going to be something to do by law. And a lot of those solar farms, there's no teeth in the bylaw the way it is now. So people, literally, you have a solar farm on fifty feet from their property with no screening, or very little screening. This will take care of protection for any resident that lives near a large tract of land that fears that. So please vote for it. Thank you.
One small question, and I was just able to read Jerry Verdrum, Duty Eight and I Avenue, Kuschnik. I was just reading the articles here, and some of these different articles in there. It says abandonment, dismantling of the sites. We have some sites that are already here. When they come to the year end, where they're not going to be able to produce any more electricity, is this bylaw going to affect those people also? And the ones that are already previously are in place when they decommission them?
I'm the town planner. So the planning board has already been in the process of accepting decommissioning laws and holding those in an account of the town. There is a twenty-year lifespan on a lot of these solar fields. At the point that the solar field is no longer operational or no longer in use, that gives the planning board and the town the right to pull that fund, those funds, and pull to restore the land back to its natural state if the company chooses not to deal with itself. Thank you.
I'm Dr. Morad, Florida Road Park Drive. I just want to bring up the public safety point. Mr. Pimento, Mr. Francois mentioned public safety. Looking at the vehicle emergency access to around solar arrays in the access roads into them. When I look at the Massachusetts General Law, it requires that there should be a twenty-foot wide access road to the solar array and all around solar array, which allows two vehicles, apparatus vehicles, to bypass each other, going in and out of one to be working and the other one to bypass. The reason why I'm bringing this up is I've seen a revised plan of a sixteen-foot accessway, which is four feet below the state requirement. And I'm wondering why that would even be considered approved, considering that would put neighboring residents, the public, in the emergency response people that would respond to an emergency there at risk. So I don't see why that would be even considered to be below the twenty feet of the state general law to sixteen feet.
I'm sorry, the town planner, Mr. Warren, referring to a particular case. Project was permitted under the assumption that the company retained ownership of a larger portion of the way that they're utilizing to access their solar site. We're going off of regulations and adequate width from what we received from our emergency management department, fire, and police. So it's something we can look into. As of right now, that's what we have as a plan. Nothing's been approved at this time, which is a way of carrying on that matters.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Mr. Moderator. I'm confused. So I want Mr. Morad asked a question, and he said on the Mass General laws, it requires a twenty-foot easement into the property for access. And I think he's saying that this bylaw says sixteen feet?
I didn't use the word easement. The twenty. Access. Access road. Okay. Vehicles to access solar arrays. Okay. And all around the array at the same time, over the area. Okay. And I've seen a revised plan, as Doug mentioned, from one of the solar companies, with a sixteen-foot plan. And I'm wondering why the town would even consider reducing from twenty feet to sixteen feet, where it doesn't, where it doesn't meet the state bylaws on state guidelines. It puts everybody at risk, surrounding neighbors. Would people respond to that emergency if there's an emergency there? Public safety of everyone. I don't see why the town would even consider that. It'd even put themselves in liability by reducing the road to sixteen feet.
Hey, I have the planning board number to see it, but I would have to suggest that maybe they would take that into consideration to refer to Mass General laws and not just make up a number. And it's not addressed inside this bylaw, so it doesn't state anything about access road width in here.
Correct. There's no defined entry width for a far access road around them. The bylaws, under this bylaw, there's nothing proposed that says sixteen feet is adequate.
I think he's just making a reference to a certain problem.
Yes, whatever, right? Yes, I.
So if it's not inside, if it's not inside, if it's not inside of this bylaw to be discussed, we understand, I understand how your situation's coming from, because I think I referenced that on the O Fire Chief, about a twenty-foot access road or the Mass General laws as you are right now. And I think he said that it's up to his purview for it to be acceptable at sixteen feet. So if it's Mass General law says that this is what it's going to be, I think that that's something that the planning board would have to have that discussion and either go with that, or I'll figure out if the town council says you can let it be sixteen feet. That a planning board.
I believe it's not Mass General law, I think it's the fire code. And there is discretion with the fire chief to make determinations whether it's adequate. I mean, our own bylaws, we allow a common driveway, the service three house lots, sixteen-foot wide. We probably should look at that, too. I agree with the general.
Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir. Roush, you like to vote?
My name is Rick Ellisite, Glade, one sixty Eighth Street. I'm a member of the planning board. I, I think the problem is that we're talking about two completely separate things. There is an existing approved solar array under the old bylaws that affects this general. What we're talking about with this article is some more stringent regulations to affect future solar arrays that come into town. Or if the solar array people that are dealing with that general project want to come in for a change, then we can talk about applying a new bylaw if we have. in for a change, then we can talk about applying a new bylaw, if we have him, to his situation. But right now, his present situation has absolutely nothing to do with voting more stringent set of solar array regulations, which is what the Planning Board has asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any further discussion? So what's before us is a zoning bylaw change, which will require a two-thirds affirmative vote to pass. All those in favor of the zoning bylaw change, please raise your blue card. All those opposed? I declare that bylaw is approved by two-thirds with opposition. Article 13, the Santa Town vote will amend the Town of Cushinget official zoning map by rezoning a parcel of land identified in excesses records as map 15. Lots 482 and 534 from the residential A zoning district to the residential village zoning district are taking any other action thereof. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I move the town to amend the Town of Cushinget official zoning map by rezoning a parcel of land identified with excesses records as map 15, lots 482 and 534 from the residential A zoning district to the residential village zoning district. This requires a two-thirds majority vote and a recommendation to report by the Planning Board after the public hearing pursuant to Chapter 48, Section 5.
For the record, the Planning Board has approved this article, and now, when we get into discussion, I'd like to introduce Mark Francois, Chairman of the Planning Board, to present their position. Before you speak, sir, I do ask for a second, I apologize. There are seconds for the motion.
Second.
You have the floor, sir.
Peter. Mark Francois, Chairman of the Planning Board, along Perry Hill Road. The Planning Board unanimously endorses this rezoning bylaw. So many key points that the public needs to know, and there was discussion at the last town meeting, is that this is only for four house lots. There isn't enough frontage for any more house lots. Any other future development of lots 534 will require the applicant to come back before the Planning Board and complete the preliminary and definitive subdivision process. The subdivision process will require adequate frontage, third-party peer review, and public hearing process. The residential village was created for residential units with water and sewer connection points. This has water and sewer connection points. A yes vote on this article will allow the addition of four house lots, rectifies current issues identified in the town zoning, and creates greater conformity within residential villages. A no vote leaves the town vulnerable for development, which could remove any sort of local control, this increasing the potential for more than 20 units on 1.74 acres of land. The state takes full control of the process and allows developers to bypass local zoning regulations, leaving the town in the middle with no say on how this property is developed. With water and sewer connections, this property will eventually get involved.
Is there any further discussion?
My name is Diane Abrams, I live on Pembroke Avenue. I spoke directly with the builder, who I knew was a very honest young man. He told me at this time, he plans on six houses, not four. So I just want people to be aware, what is the real truth? This gentleman I spoke to is a very honest, very honest young man. He informed me he's gonna put six houses and one house, which is currently on Pembroke, he's going to knock that down and put another house. I'm not against that at all, but I just want the record straight. The gentleman that is going to build a house is a very honest gentleman. And I don't know what's the difference between four, that I was told six. And I just want it on the record that it really is six and not four, and one on Pembroke. I know the builder is here, I don't know if he wants to speak, or if he has someone that wants to speak for him. This gentleman is extremely honest, and I just want the record straight. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Treyan, 1259 Main Street. The young man she's talking about, my grandson, he is here. I can bring him up if you'd like. On Bradford Street, there are three houses built already on one side of the street. What we're talking about is the other side of the street, which would be three more houses on Bradford Street. There's also a trailer that belonged to the junk yacht that is still there, that is on Pembroke. That would be demolished eventually, and that would be the fourth house. So it's three, three more houses on Bradford Street. Not four, not six, three, which would be a total of six houses on Bradford Street. At the last town meeting, there was some confusion on the way the article was written, because the way it was written, it was confusing. This is clear, and that's what it's gonna be. No, there's nothing else that I can say about it. If you want, I have my grandson, explain to me about it.
Yep, yep. Mr. Treyan, I would prefer to hear it directly from him.
Mr. Moderator.
Excuse me, are you a resident, sir?
Uh, no, no.
Oh, let me ask the registered voters here. Did you find it satisfactory to let this gentleman speak? It's your call. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Sir, you have the floor.
My name is Jeff Detera, I'm a developer on this property. So I think the misconception with the six houses, now we are only going for, the misconception was that possibly if someone dissected this lot, there is a paper street on the opposite side of Bradford, which is him. Possibly you could have developed that road and got six house lots with the land area we have, but we are not doing that, so we are just gonna do three on the other side of Bradford, and one on Pembroke. And by doing so, the yards on Bradford are gonna be much larger than 10,000 square feet, and we are gonna be eliminating two lots that will be developed. They won't be able to be developed anymore. So we are only looking to do three on Bradford, and one, and replace the trailer that exists that has a water and sewer connection now on Pembroke. And like I said, eliminating two future lots down the road by doing this.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, let the Planning Board speak.
Dave Vickin, 33, Enzo White Drive, I'm also a member of the Planning Board. I think the confusion, the way the article is written by our planner, saying four, four house lots total. Right now they have, on one side of the street, we have building lots that have been developed, and you have 10,000 square foot lots, 100 feet frontage. As you look down the street, it's paved, it has sewer, it has water. On the right side, you see four houses or whatever it is, because there's only 10,000 square foot lots. On the left side, the zoning changes to 60,000 square feet of lot area, which makes no sense when you're in the village. So it's just, when they, when they changed the zoning line, in my opinion, they just, they had to cut it off somewhere, whereas in hindsight, it should have gone back a little bit more, and that's, that's all we're talking about here. The frontage only allows four A and R lots, which means they have a paving road, they can come into the Planning Board, they get a plan signed in one night, to give you four lots instead of one. They already have one lot, because it's built a lot in and of itself the way it is now. In order to get more than four, I'm not sure if you could logistically situate six houses on that long strip of land, which doesn't, in my opinion, work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gasser.
So I guess the moral of the story is, is on the right-hand side of Pembroke? Pembroke going up? No, I understand, but on the left side of Pembroke, when you're going up to get to Bradford Street? So you've got Bradford Street that comes off this way and leads into it, there's only gonna be four more house lots, by Mr. Detera, is what he's trying to say to you. He's got more being that he could actually squeeze in, it sounds to me like maybe one or two more, but he's saying he's already gone to the Planning Board for four house lots to be approved, or he's gonna come?
He's gonna come, hasn't he?
For the four house lots? So there's an understanding with the Planning Board and Mrs. Detera, that the maximum of our house lots is four more, is that correct? And we have that on the floor tonight with the Planning Board Chairman, so it's four house lots is what he's looking to develop on that side of the road, the right side of the road.
Diane Abrams, I'm sorry for the confusion. I'm not against this being done. The way it is said, I know the area very well. There's three houses which are already built, which is fine. I feel bad the area doesn't have enough lots. And when I spoke to the gentleman, he said they were gonna build across the street three more houses, and the lots would be much larger, which makes more sense to me. And then there was another house, which is on Pembroke, which has a trailer, which is gonna eventually tear down and put a house, which is totally acceptable. I just want people to think I'm objecting to it. I did object to 13 houses, I must say that. But I'm not against this, and I would be definitely be a yes, but I just don't want people to think I'm just being a thorn in the side. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Eric Dunn will put it to a vote. Seeing it's a zoning change, it's need a two-thirds affirmative vote to pass. All those in favor of Article 13, please raise your blue card. Those opposed? Article 13 passes unanimously. Having no further business, I'd like to entertain a motion to dissolve. So.
Second.
All those in favor?